Good morning, everyone. The date is Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. We continue to work with through the health emergency, so we're using WebEx teleconferencing format. So whether you've joined us today by way of the web or by telephone, we thank you for joining us virtually. For those of you online that would like to address the board under unscheduled, please use the raise your hand feature or try to get the attention of the clerk. Members in the audience who filled out speakers cards will be taken in the order they're received by the clerk, and then we'll use the same process for the online speakers as well. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote, so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. And after we've had the motion and the second and discussion, there'll be a roll call vote by district. So in order to establish a quorum, I'm going to ask the clerk to now please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Craig Peterson. Richard Fagundes.
Here. Let the record show all members present. We have established quorum. We will be able to conduct business today. Now, if I can ask you all to please rise as we invite Pastor Andrew Cromwell from Quinian Church to deliver the invocation. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning.
Good morning, all. Let me just read a verse to you, and then we'll pray. This is what First Timothy, Chapter two, says. The first thing I want you to do is pray. Pray every way you know how for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule well, so you can be quietly about your business of living simply in humble contemplation. Do bow your heads. Lord, we just began today, as your word says, with prayer, and we acknowledge that we are in need of the wisdom of a God who is divine and perfect and great and just and righteous. And so over today's meeting, Lord, we just pray that all of those things would be present. We pray, Lord, for our rulers, our government, our leaders, this board and their staff, all those that serve within this county in every capacity. Lord, we thank you for who they are, for their lives, for their energies and their efforts, for their families. We pray a blessing upon them. We pray strength for them today, Lord, that they would know how to walk, that you would preserve them in justice and truth, that you'd give them wisdom beyond what they're able in the natural, that you would strengthen their physical bodies, Lord, and that their families would be blessed. We thank you that today we can begin in prayer. Thank you that it's one of the first things that we get to do, and we just acknowledge that you are great and perfect, and we ask your blessing today. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. And now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of this land, and to the citizens of this country.
Thank you very much. We're going to begin the morning with recognizing Westland Water District for seven decades of service as an irrigation district. And Supervisor Verboen, do you would like to make some opening statements?
No, I think it's an honor to have Western Water here in our district. Four hundred thousand acres, both Fresno and Kings County. Agriculture is the lifeblood of our county, along with the water, and they've been managing the water. They've had a lot of ups and downs over the last, since eighty-five, I believe. They've lost a lot of water, a lot of responsibility, and they're still here today. So they've been resilient, and they've come together, and, you know, we'll thank you. Chairman, right?
President.
Yes. President of the Western Water District is Ryan Ferguson, and he's here today to accept an honor you're going to give him.
Good morning, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you for being here. We do have a couple of items for you. The chair, come on down. We do have a resolution with all of the warehouses there for us in the proper location. Not the chairman, I mean the property. And so we certainly want you to take this to the west side. Got everybody?
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
Sorry.
You got it. See this? I used to look like that. Hold on. Got everybody now?
Yes.
Here does a good job with a big camera like that. That's her head. She cuts a cut down on that. I know. That's. We also have a couple of other items for you to be able to take with you, and Western Water District is, did they make six hundred thousand acres?
Yes.
Five ninety-two, is I think the last time I checked, but they made six hundred thousand acres?
We've got about a hundred and twenty permanently retired.
Permanent retired?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you've ever seen one of these. You might be able to wear this in the proper location. The sheriff is here, though, and so you have classified these as Portuguese gang covers. So certainly be careful. Exactly. Then we also have one-of-a-kind guaranteed to be a family. There is a serial number on the back of it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you'd be able to take that home with you and be able to share that with somebody. Anything you want to say?
I just like to thank the board for recognizing the district as president of the board and lifelong farmer and resident of the county. I'm honored that you guys recognize the contributions of Westland. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could too as well.
Please.
Ryan, thank you, especially you and your family, the commitment to agriculture. You know, it's a challenging situation. Nobody's been more challenged than Westland Water District to actually take and retire land, buy it back from growers, and make that work. The leadership that you guys have shown in the industry, I don't know where we'd be without you guys. You know, I mean, there's so many great ideas, and, I mean, and there's also some challenges, right? I mean, we have to make deals with the devil sometimes, and, but I've always been very respectful of your board, the process, the fight that you guys have waged, and the cost of that fight to our county is measurable, and just back to the board, thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you very good. Good, thank you. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Speakers will be limited to two minutes, and does the clerk have a record of anyone that would like to? Would you have one?
I do not have any written correspondence. It appear, I have no speaker cards, but it appears some. I have several people standing to speak this morning.
All right, who wants to go first?
I'll go.
I go. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Josh Cunningham, Assistant Fire Chief for the Kings County Fire Department. Want to give you an update on your fire department. It's been a brutal last couple of weeks. Chief and I were sitting around talking about the heat wave that was coming and the effect it was going to have on our people, and the state called us and offered us an in-county strike team. And we haven't done this since two thousand eight. So going into the heat wave, we up-staffed four engines and hampered up-staffed one, and we ran for seven days, up-staffing four of our stations with personnel. We had seventeen additional personnel for use throughout the county during the extreme heat wave, and that task force that was put together was deployed several times, and it was very useful to help put the fires, put them out quickly and get all the personnel back to the station. We're quite happy that the heat waves come to an end and the state's taken away that from us because we don't meet the criteria anymore, but all the other fires in the state that started, the engines were back for about an hour, and we formed up another strike team and headed to Tahoe. So right now, we have eight person, nine personnel in Tahoe, and that's consisting of two engines, two battalion chiefs, and Dolly went back out with her radio communication team, so she's up-running the radio system in the mosquito fire. This morning, it was forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one acres, and it's at eighteen percent containment. And all this is being done while Kings County Fire Departments are staffed one hundred percent twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Josh. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name's Alicia Ramirez. I'm with Assembly Member Rudy Salas' office, and I wanted to provide a legislative update. Kings County Fire will be receiving five point five million. We have six million to Kings County Department of Public Works to complete the construction of the Kettleman City Pedestrian Bridge over the Highway forty-one, so we're very excited about that as well. Six million to expand the Kings County Superior Court and create a new judgeship. And we have. The rest are for King, Tulare County. Overall, Mr. Salas has delivered two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars in his district. Also would like to announce that Assembly Member Rudy Salas honors Juan Miguel Clarubias with Memorial Highway Dedication. We should be getting some information on that pretty soon. We will also be inviting you guys to that. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you for the update.
Mr. Chairman, could I add to that for a second? Thank you, Alicia, for that, and I believe she also has some dates for some check presentations as well, if you don't mind me saying one of those. Monday, September, I mean, September twenty-sixth in Kettleman City, nine AM. Some Member Salas will be there for a check presentation. I don't know the location yet, maybe back at the intersection there on Highway forty-one, but I do want to take the time to thank him because this six million dollars that he delivered was on the last night of him being in session, right? Legislation legislative session's over, they're all home, so this was his last day on the floor of the assembly. It was an honor to be there with him. I appreciate the invite, and when I got up there on Tuesday night, I met with him about ten fifteen PM in the Capitol Building when they just got out of session the night before. At that time, he gave me a heads up that he would be running another six million dollars for the Kettleman City Bridge the next morning, and so I was there in the chambers for the vote. As soon as the vote passed, I stepped out, I called Mr. Ed Hill and let him be aware of that. So that's a total of eight million dollars now, Mr. Chairman, for the bridge, a bridge that's estimated at five to seven million, and I hope that the board could appreciate the fiscal aspect of it where we went. We got the money now, and thanks to Assembly Member Salas, you know, we have a pretty good chance of not using any county funds to build that bridge. Highway forty-one is once again, very sadly proven very dangerous. As at this moment, two families in Kettleman are mourning the loss of their loved ones from the accident north of Highway forty-one, I mean, north of Kettleman on Highway forty-one a couple nights ago. So prayers out to the community of Kettleman City on that. But Alicia, thank you. Not only is Assembly Member Salas done a good job to find the definition of a public servant, but we appreciate the good staff work you and Damian have done over the years, and to end this cycle with the money for the firefighters and for the community of Kettleman and this bridge, the county of Kings. I just want to take this, probably one of these last opportunities, to say thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. One last thing, we also have two million dollars for Lamar Fire, which is also going to be a check presentation on that same date at eleven o'clock. Thank you.
Very good. Does the clerk have a record of anyone else under unscheduled?
Has their hand raised.
Okay, nobody online. Last call for in-person. Seen no one come forward. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the August thirtieth meeting. Have board members had an opportunity to review the minutes?
I move for approval.
Moved by Fagundes.
Second.
Verboen.
Seconded by Verboen. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, the minute stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. The consent calendar is quite extensive this morning, so hopefully you've had everything, everybody's had an ample time to review the consent calendar. Are there any questions or concerns of those?
There are no questions or comments you'd like to make. Move for approval.
Second, Verboen.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboen. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items. First item comes from Behavioral Health, and Dr. Lewis, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Lisa Lewis, Kings County Behavioral Health. I'm here this morning to present one of the foundational contracts of our department, the Mental Health Plan Contract, which is a five-year contract with the state from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-seven. This is a renewal. Just as a little background, the Department of Mental Health Services in contract with the Center for Medicaid Services, CMS, they contract with CMS to provide mental health services and Medi-Cal, to Medi-Cal beneficiaries in California. DHCS, excuse me, accomplishes providing mental health services to Medi-Cal beneficiaries in California by two means. One, they contract with the managed care plan such as.
Well, that's good. Believe me, it saves you a whole lot of headache, because as good of a friend as Mr. Wabber was to me.
As DA Fagundes.
You have everybody? Good. Dr. Lewis, please.
Sorry, yeah. DHCS accomplishes this by providing mental health services to Medi-Cal beneficiaries to California by two means. The first is they contract through the managed care plans like Anthem and Calviva for provision of mental health services to those with mild and moderate mental health symptoms. And secondly, they contract with county behavioral health departments in, as mental health plans for the provision of specialty mental health services for children and youth with serious emotional disturbances and adults with severe mental illness. The contract before you today is the Mental Health Plan Contract from Department of Healthcare Services to Kings County Behavioral Health. Through this contract, Department of Healthcare Services stipulates that the county mental health plan, what they will provide, what services they will provide, to whom they will provide them, who is eligible, how they will provide them, and by whom, which providers, and what can be billed to Medi-Cal for reimbursement. The stipulations are covered through the welfare and institution codes and the CCR codes, and make up various exhibits in this contract for what Kings County Behavioral Health is audited for compliance for every three years in our triennial review, which we call our Medi-Cal review, and in addition to our annual review, which we call EQRO, or External Quality Review. There's a long list of, in the scope of work, which I can speak to, but I'll go ahead and move on. The Department of Healthcare Services Mental Health Contract Plan is a five-year term. The last contract was from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen through twenty-one, twenty-two, and this new contract is from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-six, twenty-seven. It is the renewal. The changes of the contract represent, the primary changes to the contract are those within the state of California's new CAL AIM, which stands for California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. It's their initiative, which spans from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-five, twenty-six. In brief, CAL AIM is a Department of Healthcare Services initiative to reform the Medi-Cal program in order to accomplish three primary goals: to identify and manage comprehensive needs through a whole-person care approach and social drivers of health; number two, to make Medi-Cal a more consistent and seamless system for enrollees to navigate by reducing complex and increasing, with increasing flexibility, by reducing complexity, excuse me; and number three, improve quality outcomes, reduce health disparities, and transform the delivery system through value-based initiatives, modernization, and payment reform. The changes are seen throughout the contract where applicable, such as revising access criteria for those accessing services through the Mental Health Plan. It also shifts reasons for recoupment from billing to strictly looking at fraud, waste, and abuse, and it also documents provider enrollment through a new system. After this renewal, there will continue to be changes. As with any department who is contracting with the state, there are changes that will occur during the term of the contract, such as legislative or regulatory changes. It is also known that there are changes to come in CAL AIM as it continues to roll out through fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Changes to services and operations captured within the MHP contract are conveyed by the Department of Healthcare Services through Behavioral Health Information Notices, which Kings County Behavioral Health receives and adopts ongoing. There are approximately sixty to eighty information notices each year. Our staff receives these, interprets them, and disseminates them throughout our system. There is no impact of the general fund or exchange of funds through this agreement. This agreement allows for the county to provide and arrange for the provision of specialty mental health services to eligible Medi-Cal beneficiaries of Kings County through realignment funding, as well as to receive FFP funds through Medi-Cal billable services. So the request before you today is number one, to consider approving the agreement with the California Behavioral Health Care Services for the Mental Health Plan Contract retroactive to July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, and number two, to authorize the Director of Behavioral Health to sign the agreement and any amendments with the California Department of Mental Health Services. And this is a retroactive contract because we received it in late July and has taken this amount of time to go through the contracting process. It has been reviewed by county council as reform. So I'm available for any questions you might have, and I'll just add that I want to express appreciation to our department for all the work they've done. We feel much more ready to implement and oversee the Mental Health Plan this year than we did five years ago, so we've made a lot of progress, and I really appreciate all the work.
Very good, Dr. Lewis. Thank you very much. Questions? Supervisor Peterson?
Good, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to address for a second, I know that, you know, there's been a lot of legislation this year, care courts added this. I know you've expressed your concerns about staff being somewhat overwhelmed with the load that is going to be shifted to our mental health services, and just maybe if you could address that, how you're preparing for that, are you, how, you know? And again, then you look at all of these new mandates, and I'm going to call it mandate, I mean, we're accepting this program, but the cost to the county above and beyond, you know, with respect to overhead and things of that nature.
Right. And as you noted, I think it was last week, Care Court is going to be funded, as we understand going forward, we just don't know what those funds are going to look like yet. We expect to be in the second round of Care Court, so the first round of counties is going to implement October, two thousand twenty-three. We are not in that round, and we expect to learn a lot by watching that process very closely and to implement, we believe, October of two thousand twenty-four. And so in the next year or so, we should know more about what the funding will look like and what the structure of that process will look like. There's been a lot of changes during all the negotiations that have happened through CSAC and CBHDA, which has improved a lot of the look of what Care Court is likely to be. In addition to that, because of CAL AIM, the things I was outlining here, and because of Care Court, I have been in conversation with administration about making a few changes within the department. We do need to make one major structural change, and then we are going to continue to build out our administration the way that we need to oversee it. We haven't had as much trouble hiring in administrative roles as they do in clinical roles. Clinicians throughout the state are running at about forty percent shortage, so we're doing everything we can to support people getting through school and becoming clinicians. But as far as administrative work goes, we've been very fortunate that we've had some wonderful people willing to come to our department from within the county and some from with other counties, and we hope that we're building an attractive culture, or people want to work for us, and they see the value in the work they're doing, and I feel very positive about what we're about to do.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Are there any other questions or comments?
If there's no question or comments, I'll move approval at the beginning.
Second. Moved by Verboen, seconded by Fagundes. Additional questions, comments, or concerns? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, item stands five in favor. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda comes from Community Development, and consider accepting the monthly report on last evening's planning commission meetings. Chuck Kenny, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chuck Kenny with Community Development Agency, just coming to report out from last night's planning commission meeting. There was one item for consideration at last night's meeting, which was conditional use permit number twenty-two dash oh-two for Kings CSG Three LLC. They proposed to do a three-megawatt solar project. It is out off the southwest corner of Highway one ninety-eight in the Avonel cutoff. It's a rather large parcel, but they're only using twenty acres of it, and it's the southwest corner of that parcel where they're looking to locate. It is strictly just PV solar, it is not batteries, it is not a, any buildings, and the planning commissioners unanimously, those that were present unanimously approved the project last night, and there was no public comments in opposition. Are there any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Questions, comment?
If there's no questions or comments, I'll approve the report at the beginning.
Moved by Verboen.
Second.
Seconded by Valley. Additional questions? Will clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboen. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Let the record show, that report stands approved unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item comes from the Department of Finance. Jimmer. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here and talking about a resolution establishing property tax rates.
Sure. Good morning, Supervisors. Jimmer, Director of Finance. This is normally a consent item. It's something that's required for us to add on to the one percent Proposition thirteen tax rates, so we can pay bonds that have been approved by the voters, general obligation bonds, so they've been approved by the voters, where we have an obligation to make a payment, and we need this approval to add it to the tax bill, so we can print the tax bills by the end of the month. The tax sheet shows our calculation, where we take anything that's left over from the prior year, and what we do is we calculate enough to make the payment, but there's changes during the year, places, real estate gets sold, we get supplemental bills, things go up, so we end up usually with a little bit extra, and we calculate, we figure that, plus supplemental, plus, or non-supplemental, unsecured, and any unitary tax that's coming in to figure, to calculate what we need in the way of tax money to make the debt service payments for the year. So your approval of this will allow us to add that and print our tax bills. If you don't approve it, then we will not be issuing tax bills this year, and, no, I'm kidding. We'll have to do it, but that's what this is, and it's really something that's required, so. Any questions?
That's, thank you, sir, Mr. Chairman. So it's not an increase?
No, it's not an increase, and it's, in fact, you know, Proposition thirteen back in the nineteen seventies made it one percent, so there's never an increase beyond the one percent unless it's been approved by the voters for that particular area.
Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, you know, I mean, you just look at the economy today, you see the challenges that are out there for, you know, probably the most unwilling of folks that are challenged financially, and just curious, the rate of, you know, what called default, but lack of payment, has that modified? we call default, but lack of payment, has that modified any during this period, or are you seeing any shifts?
You know, our delinquency rate is still real low. Many of these payments are, come through impounds, and it's certainly the easiest way to set up any kind of mortgage payment. People that don't have impounds often have their house paid off, and so they're, you know, they don't have a mortgage, and they seem to be able to make it. But we, our delinquency rate is between 1 and 2%, and it seems to stay there pretty consistently. You know, I think the bigger worry with the economy is that we see a drop in real estate. And if that happens, then we may see kind of broad-scale reductions of assessed value for a temporary period of time. Real estate kind of follows behind the economy. So if we saw something like that, it could impact us in two years down the road. We had that happen in about 2009. But that's, that's probably the bigger concern.
And just from the, the aspect that your, your tax values are dropping, but the bond values are consistent, and?
Yeah, yeah. The bond payments will be there. And they're, they're set for 30 years, whatever the bond period is. So that will always, well, it changes because that's just the, the way the bond has set up. Often you have smaller payments in the earlier years with larger payments in the later years with the assumption that real estate will go up and that assessed value will be spread more, and the bond payment can be absorbed. So hopefully, we're not going to see a big increase. And often, even when the economy goes down, we don't see a huge decrease in assessed value. We just see a slowdown, a slowdown of housing changing hands. And when houses change hands, assessed values usually go up, and that's, it's kind of, it adds to our growth every year. And that's why we're beyond the 2% that's allowed by the assessor.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other?
Questions? Jim, the only, the only ones I didn't see on there were West Hills College. And West Hills College, I think, because the district's in Fresno County, probably sets the rate, and we just?
Right. We just?
Apply it?
We just apply it, right.
Yeah. So, but we don't have to have it part of this resolution?
I don't, no, I don't believe so.
Okay. Yeah. Because that's, that's the only bond indebtedness that I didn't see on this list. And, and I thought that was the case, but I'm always concerned when I don't see it on the?
Yep.
You know, on the, on the rates.
Yeah.
So, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the item? Chair will entertain a motion. So moved, seconded. Moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboon. Additional questions, comments, or clarifications? Seeing none, will a clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, the item stands approved, five in favor. So Jim, you can send the tax bills out, and everybody has to pay.
Thank you.
And when's the due date?
November 2nd.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, because that, that December 15th date, that's when it's, that's when you get the late notice, but it's due. Yeah. Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Next item comes from the Fire Department. Chief Lynch, good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Bill Lynch, Kings County Fire Department. Here with kind of a little bit of an unusual item. Asking for some preapproval for the purchase of a transport for Dozer 9. Over the last probably six to eight months, we've identified the fact that our transport vehicle is underpowered and undergeared. We're continuing to expand the range of that, that program. Working in Northern California really pointed out the fact that we need a different transport. With that, we started looking around and quickly found out that the availability of these types of vehicles is very limited and subject to immediate, you got to make a commitment, or they're not going to give it to you. So what we're here this morning to ask you for is to authorize the fire chief to initiate a search for a replacement vehicle for Dozer 9's transport within the price range of $150,000 to $250,000, and then authorize the fire chief to submit a letter of commitment for the purchase of that newer used vehicle with the vendor that's identified. And I'd like to point out that if we get to the point where we were going to make a purchase, we would bring that back to you for approval and financing approval also. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Question, Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, appreciate you bringing it to the attention of the board, but on something like this, especially as busy as you guys are right now, and the urgency that you just presented to the board, there's not a protocol that, I guess, to, to staff, too, there's not a protocol that allows the fire chief to move quicker without having to come before the board, or does this amount automatically trigger that he had to be here?
Thank you, Supervisor Valley, through the chair, for your question. There's two key items there. To answer your first question, he has that authority when there's a declared emergency, but there isn't a declared emergency for this event. Secondly, the dollar value is the determining factor in our purchasing policy. And if you recall, we had to do something similar with this with public health when we were looking for a mobile testing unit to purchase ourselves. They just weren't on the market. When we found them, we had to act fast. We came to your board and asked for the similar permission back then.
Is there anything, we, thank you, Mr. Chair, is there anything we can do, the board, any kind of action the board could take right now to help the chief expedite this without having to come back for financing arrangements and approval for all of that, where he can call the dealer and say, hey, green light, let's, let's lock this in?
The action your board would take today would give him the ability to lock in that price and provide the necessary deposit and promise of funds to secure that.
Yes, Supervisor Valley, that's what the item B is. We've talked with some vendors, and they've indicated that if we just give them a letter of commitment, they would hold a vehicle if we found one for, for us.
Oh, good, okay.
And lock the price in and be able, give us time to come back to the board for approval and get our financing.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair. Any other questions?
Yeah, just one. How many batteries does it have? I mean, this is California, right?
Probably two.
Two.
Just to start it.
You can't, you can't pull a trailer if it's an old battery truck, right, going uphill?
No.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're going for the Tim Allen model, the 630-horse.
I'm not sure where those parking stations are at.
It has the same amount of batteries as your plane.
I don't have a plane no more, but, so 630, 630-horse, or what, what are you?
Yeah, it'll be 500.
500? That's not enough.
And on the, on another note, the state reimburses at a different rate for higher horsepower, too. So we're very interested in that.
Yeah, no, you want to lease a 500, 550?
Yeah. I'd say go all out, four-wheel drive.
Yeah.
Locking differentials.
Windscreen.
Those knobby tires. Inserious XM for the firefighters they deserve.
It'll have radios, just probably not those.
Sleeper, you gonna get sleeper this time?
No, no sleeper. We use ACAB.
All right. It's been moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Is there any additional questions, comments, or concerns about the truck? No boogie lights underneath?
That would be kind of new.
It was the second, I guess, huh?
Verboon's got the second.
All right, good.
All right. With that, will a clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show that this item stands approved, five in favor. So good luck.
Get that dealer on the phone. Put him on speaker.
All right. They're looking. All right. The next item comes from administration, or two items, but item two has been pulled regarding the organic waste recycling, and we'll come back at a later date. So this morning, we're just going to take up the resolution regarding the continued declaration of a local emergency. Matt, good morning. Thank you for being
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Matthew Boye, Kings County Administration. Yes, this is a continuation, a resolution, you know, continuing to declare a local emergency due to the continuing drought conditions here in the county. So your board initially approved the very first resolution declaring the local emergency on April 1 of this year, and that's because March 28 of this year, the governor signed an executive order, you know, declaring such an emergency across the state due to the Department of Water Resources pulling back the state water project allocations all the way to 5% because of low water supply in the state. And so obviously, that combined with January, February, and March of this year being the three driest years in the state's history, led the governor to go ahead and sign that executive order. So after that, we did our initial drought resolution. And so obviously, the drought conditions haven't gotten better in the county. They, they continue to, you know, progress in the wrong direction, and the water outlook and the supplies in the 2023 water year don't look that rosy either. So with that, based on Government Code 8630, Section C, these types of emergency declarations need to be reviewed every 60 days. And so we're here with you this morning to continue to continue the drought, emergency declaration to drought to allow farmers, businesses, local government agencies a potential avenue for some administrative and/or fiscal relief to help address the continuing drought conditions. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Matthew. Questions, comments, concerns? I'll further present it.
Second.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Peterson. Additional questions? Will a clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. And as I said, item two has been pulled and will return back at a later date. The next is an update from the Health Department regarding COVID-19 monkeypox and West Nile. I'll just throw all three of them.
All three of them.
You get the trifecta.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rose Ram, Department of Public Health. Here today to provide you a quick update on COVID. The number of COVID cases have steadily decreased over the past three weeks. The numbers are down in the last two weeks to 608 cases, and the prior reporting period was 533, but there is a lag in those numbers. BA5 is still the dominant strain among sample sequence, and Kings County still remains high in the orange classification for community transmission this week, according to CDC. But as noted, with our numbers decreasing, we should be moving into the moderate. Local hospitalizations have significantly reduced since my last report. There are six patients hospitalized. Of those, three are Kings County residents, and all three are in medical surgical units. Testing continues in the county at various locations and also at the Public Health Department. The last two weeks, there's been a total of 1,222 tests done at the Health Department and 6,824 in the county with a 9.7 positivity. We continue to have that rapid antigen tests. Vaccinations over the last two weeks, 579 vaccines were given, and two weeks, the last two weeks in the Health Department, 105. Residents get vaccinations at Health Department, pharmacies, and several pop-up locations. The biggest news is the bivalent boosters are now available at the Health Department at various locations. These bivalent boosters have the BA4 and 5 variants in them. We're providing both a Pfizer and Moderna product. The Pfizer is for 12 years of age and older. Moderna is 18 years of age and older. And in order to receive a booster, you have not, you have to have not received any vaccine for the last two months. So I mean, no COVID vaccine for two months. If you've not had a booster, the bivalent booster is the only booster you can have. So prior, historically, you got your first two shots, and then your booster was actually one of the other shots again. Now you'll get your first two shots, and then you'll receive one of these bivalents as long as you're within that 12 and up for Pfizer or 18 and up for Moderna. So we are recommending that individuals get their booster if they have not had one. Most of this information is on the Kings County Department of Public Health website, kcdph.com. And as always, we'd like to remind everyone to stay home when you're sick, get tested if experiencing COVID-like symptoms, and get vaccinated or boosted if you've not yet. Masks continue to provide protection. Are still required in the healthcare setting. There is some information coming about testing in the workplace for high-risk unvaccinated individuals in high-risk settings about testing. I'm hoping to receive something today with regards to that order from the health officer, so I'll send an update to the board once I get that.
Could you clarify that a little bit? Is it a mandate?
So, you know, when they did the order, when somebody was working in a, in a high-risk setting, like say, they're going to change it for skilled nursing, but in certain settings or like schools, they were saying you had to have proof of vaccination. You didn't have proof of vaccination, you had to test every week. So they're probably going to remove that testing requirement. So if they're requiring, they aren't going to require you to test every week. There still will be settings like skilled nursing facilities or congregate settings where they will probably still require testing, but those individuals who chose not to get vaccinated might not have to test every week like they had been. So that might reduce the number of testing numbers we'll see, because a lot of people were coming to do their work testing at various places. Quickly on monkeypox, or MPX, as they're calling it now, we do have one positive case in Kings County. There are 75 cases in the San Joaquin Valley. 97% of the cases in the state are male, and 71% of the cases are between the ages of 25 and 44 years of age. There is optimism around MPX in California as the statewide Epi curve has peaked and cases are seeming to decrease, likely due to increased vaccine supply and greater public awareness. We currently have been vaccinating individuals at risk and those in contact with a positive case. As for West Nile virus, for neuroinvasive totals, we have four. Two sadly passed away that were positive cases, and two are pending state labs for confirmation. However, they are listed as probable. And we have one non-neuroinvasive case, so five cases total. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Any ideas when the endemic will start?
Like my crystal ball?
I know, exactly. You know, we?
I mean, I'd like to say we're entering that now that we have this
Right.
bivalent vaccine, that we'll start to see things, that reducing with the state looking like they're going to announce reducing that testing, I think it feels like we're going in that direction, that this will become something like flu every year where you're going to have a booster. So.
Yeah. And, and don't they have to give us like 60-day notice when they're starting to cancel the health emergency, or is it 30?
They usually give you a pretty, they haven't canceled that yet.
Okay.
So I'll be posted if I hear anything. They usually try to alert us like a few days ahead of time before the governor's going to come out with stuff.
Yeah, because at one time, they were looking at October 1, and they've already launched that pass. And so now we're thinking January 1. But I was just curious as to see if there was anybody, any other updated information.
I have not heard anything.
Okay.
No.
Very good. Thank you. Stay helping.
Thanks.
That concludes all of the action items on today's agenda. We'll now move to board member announcements or reports on their own initiatives the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty quiet, but still seems like, you know, the, the challenges of the drought, you know, lack of surface water supplies are, you know, hitting wells pretty hard, and a number of calls last week on, on our process for drilling wells and getting that approval. And so I think still going to be with us for some time with respect to that. Also, a couple issues on senior health, and I would, I don't, I have to address this myself, but some challenges with Tulare County, I think, and I think they're still in pandemic mode, and they're not allowing person-to-person meetings, and it's, there's been some challenges for some of our seniors to, to access services. So I need to follow up on that. But anyways, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Verboon?
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to thank Chief Lynch for inviting me to the check presentation from Assembly Member Rudy Solz, $5 million, which is amazing. I think the chief made a comment that he's been a fire, in the fire business for 35 years, 30, over 35 years. First time in his history this has ever happened. So I look forward to taking that $5.5 million and turning it into $10 million. Don't waste it. We're going to put to good use. Last Thursday evening, went to the 70th anniversary party for Western Water District, and they had it with a document, documentary series, Watershed Healing. And it talked about the forest restoration and how important it is to take care of our forest. And it was interesting because it brought people together that actually caused part of the problem, saying that we got to fix this. So I was sitting with Don Wrights, he has a water paper called Water Rights. He's putting together a series for me, a little documentary or kind of synopsis of what we heard that night. And when I go to DC next week, I'll share it with our legislators back there, because basically, it's federal government that's holding us back right now on that, and talked about how much more water we can get if we start taking care of our forest. Also, I want to thank Manor Construction for the invitation to go attend Sheriff's Posse Dinner last Saturday night. It was, it was a sold-out event. It had rained 15 hundredths of an inch before the event started, and it was pretty moist in the air. But everybody had a good time and good people, good, good time. It was good. It was just, you got to get in the mood, man. It was just- It was just, the grass is green, the moisture was coming up, the sun went down, the mosquitoes came out, the gnats came out, but it didn't stop anybody. The alcohol line was long, so it was good. On a bad note, so the unions are threatening to go on strike on the, on the railroads. And so Burlington Northern and Santa Fe and all of them are threatening to go on strike. The president had an order which asked them to go on a cooling off period on October 16th. If they do not come into agreement by 12:01 on Friday, September 16th, they will go on strike. And that will affect all freight movement and all passenger train rails across the United States and the bus service too. So hopefully they get, they start lining up and get things done. If not, they park the train someplace where it doesn't block our intersections, but it doesn't look good right now. You know, it's, when the freight trains are parked in our city, it shuts down everything. So hopefully if they do go on strike, they park the trains in their yards. I don't know if that will happen or not, but let's hope that they come to an agreement by 12:01 on Friday night. If not, we're going to have a problem here. Last year, the dock workers went on strike, which killed our ag economy and it still not has, yet recovered since that day. So this, you know, and a lot of, a lot of the ag deals have made a promotion to take, instead of delivering products to Oakland, they're going to put them on freight rail and ship them to Long Beach or LA or the Gulf. And this does not help the situation at all. So this hope that they come to an agreement. If not, it will probably kill our economy completely. It's where, you know, whether or not we have water or not, those that are going to crop, we can't get it to port, so.
Yeah, well, you, I mean, even if you look back a few months ago, what was it, Foster Farms couldn't, unit trains from back east, they were just refusing. They went without feed, they almost had this critical bird kill off because they couldn't get feed, so.
It worked the mercy of others right now and there's no humanity in the world and, you know, everybody got their hands out, they want more money. It's hard to make a living when they've increased minimum wage, reduced hours worked. People can't make it, so the economy just falling apart right in front of us and actually the state is trying to take away our local control. So hopefully we can get through this and be around next year. Thank you.
That's Amtrak tubes.
Amtrak.
Everything, buses, trains, everything.
And that's not just freight going out, that's freight coming in.
Yeah.
So any, any wet parts, any, anything that you're trying to get shipped in that's coming by rail is not going to be moving.
So if you're, if you have a, so you have a drought and your well, you lose your well. So now you've got to drill a bigger hole, put a bigger service in. You can't get any electronics to run your well, maybe up to a year.
Right.
So even if you have a, well, you don't, you can't get it.
Yeah.
You're just stuck, so your crop dies. And I don't know if you noticed, a lot of, a lot of people's trees are hurting and crops are hurting right now due to lack of water, lack of parts to upgrade your equipment. And the hot weather did not help at all, it hurt everybody. 114 degree day that one day was just devastating to our ag, ag people.
Correct.
Including myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Valley.
I'll be quick, Mr. Chair, thanks for the time you gave me early on. I want to thank all the people who put on the job fair on a Thursday. I believe that was Lance Whippincott, the team over at a job training office. And I want to thank our county human resource department. I, I went to all the booths and visited with folks.
Get a job?
I left, I had some on-the-spot interviews, things looked promising. They, they said I need a little bit more professional training.
Hey, you know, when you're pushing a broom, there's nothing wrong with that.
Hey, it feels good.
In your head.
I was pushing a broom the other day and I just said, what's this salty liquid coming off my forehead? But no, they did a good job. And the turn, I'd be interested in hearing the turnout of the whole day. I left after maybe two hours. I know before the line would just be way out the door, people would be there early. So I got there about 8:30 and the line wasn't as long as I anticipated it to be. And so that was kind of interesting, but I don't know if the crowd came later, but they worked very hard to put that together and a lot of people put a lot of time and effort. And when you just show up on the day, game day, a lot of people don't realize all the hours and organization to pull off that day, it just looks easy to us, but, but we know better and, and just want to say thank you. On the, the information you put forward kind of lines up, I'm going to make some calls today because I got a disturbing call last night that there wouldn't be any turkeys for Operation Gobble that, or for any of us.
Oh, you just said it?
You just said that on the bird kill off? So I don't, I don't know what we're going to do. It'd be, I mean, it affects everybody, but I mean, we have a long history of, of Operation Gobble and we got to find a way to get around that. So if anyone has any turkeys or chickens in their backyard, Sheriff, confiscate them, I'll buy them off you.
You should get a turkey rescue and raise them yourself.
Hey, we got, I'm going to talk to you after the, after the meeting. No, but.
Oh, beef.
Beef? I mean, it might be cheaper.
Pork.
We'll, we'll call up Mr. Harris at Harris Ranch, see if we get some tri tips, but yeah, so that's just sad all the way around. And, and then however you're going to double that 4.5.5, I want to put my next paycheck with you too, double that too.
Let it ride.
Don't be betting on the Raiders though, so.
Good, solid investments to our community.
Man, let's do it. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Good, thank you. Do you need a letter of recommendation for us for your new job?
I do.
I think the board could come together and do one for you.
Harris Ranch does have a job fair today out of Harris Ranch, so yeah, they're interested.
We'll burdue.
Yeah, yeah. Supervisor Fagundes.
Well, last week we had the pinning of the badges, Fire Department, and that was well done. Chief and Josh, you guys did an excellent job, or Josh now, he's pointing to you. And this place was full and that was, that was quite an honor to have this all full like, like it was and.
Yeah, people got dressed up. I mean, it was a big deal. I mean, I don't go to many of those, but to see the families come around and, and their loved ones was a big deal. I mean, it was, they're still, I'm still seeing stuff on social media, people that were proud to be here for the, promoted the captain, I believe, one of them was. And we had two new firefighters that got sworn in, so very cool.
Thank you, Dirk.
Sorry. Forgot the, I was, I was there, I forgot to bring it up, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Very good. Thank you for handling that as well. For me, August 31st was a special meeting of the South Fork Kings Groundwater Sustainability Agency. We heard an update on the plan as well as approved Tulare Lake Sub Basin proposal. Our share is about 16%. We also discussed well registration program and it's tabled for further review. And then we also moving forward and developing a general manager as we separate out from Kings River. The attended the Children's Movement Breakfast in Clovis, very well-attended event. Calviva is one of the sponsors. A lot of, a lot of stuff going on in the, in Fresno County. We had the home opener for West Hills College Golden Eagles volleyball team and continue to announce for that program. And Lamoore High had their home opener on the football field with military and first responder appreciation night, and that was very well-attended too. Had the ability to haul lambs to the Madera Fair and you talk about the hot day, that was the hot day. Hauling lambs into the fair. And I was glad we were done by about 10 o'clock and it was only about 98 degrees. So granddaughter did good, finished second in her class and finished showmanship, so, and she won the round robin, so she'll move on as the best showman exhibitor of the Madera County Fair.
Did you buy any lambs?
I gave her a dollar a pound, but she got 11. So, yeah, we just a contributor.
Okay. I'm calling them lamb chops at the next barbecue.
Oh, yeah, you made it better. Exactly. Yeah, $12 a pound lamb, that, that's, you stay with chicken.
Yeah. Well, I bought a $600 chicken one time, so.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Calviva policy meeting we had in Fresno, the committee reviewed the charter. Enrollment of that program is over 405,000 souls. The health education incentive programs were discussed as well and Calviva members are some of the highest immunizations in the managed care program. And I think it is because of the incentive program. So we continue to brag about that wherever we have a chance. That fire in Stratford was very devastating. Staff did a great job on knockdown, fire management did a great job. Cart is having bus issues, so we weren't able to offer rehab. So at some point, we'd probably need to sit down and talk about some kind of a better rehab plan. Do want to thank the sheriff and the district attorney who took their command vehicles out, but we really need a better rehab plan. And so we probably need to put that on a discussion for some time in the future as we talk about emergency preparedness around here, not just for fire, but for law enforcement and just about any, any of the departments that can use that type of vehicle. So that will be a nice discussion in the future. Cal vans had their monthly meeting, 693 vans are deployed throughout the state, 595 of them are in the ag operations with 98 in the general transportation. We did hire a new CPA firm, Price Page and Company out of Clovis will be conducting the audits and assisting with record keeping. The organization also wants to separate from Kings County, so relocation is underway to free up space at the county and I think the sheriff is looking at that space already. So we are moving in that direction. So if you have any details or anything, a couple of things else that are affecting Cal vans, driver's licenses have changed a little bit during, during COVID and I think some people kind of missed it. The Class A and Class B driver has always had a passenger endorsement that you had to fill out if you wanted to drive buses. And the state of California has moved that to a Class C license now. So somebody with a Class C license that's driving a 10 or 15 passenger van has to have a passenger endorsement. So we've gotten caught a couple of times, drivers not having that endorsement. It's only been a fix-it ticket so far and DMV is really far behind in some of the certification of that endorsement. And, you know, every time you add an endorsement to your license, you don't just go in and take that, they make you take the whole test. So you're there all day. And so we're working through those issues. The board also is considering an increase currently, we're at $1.35 a mile. Fuel surcharges and fuel prices have driven up the cost of operations, so we're considering a $1.45 per mile and then researching a fuel surcharge that will be evaluated every six months in order to keep that program viable. Got to help Diane with the class of 1980 golf tournament at the Lamoore Golf Tournament, or golf course, 11 teams or so. It was that day that it rained, so it was a little bit of humidity and a little bit of, but it was just so much cooler, it just felt better, even though it was very sticky, but. When that, Otis Tolbert tomorrow? Correct. Yeah. Yeah, so very well-attended. They ate a lot of donuts and a lot of donut holes and drank a lot of coffee. So certainly want to thank Diane and the class of 1980 for continuing that. And then on Saturday night, the Lamoore Raceway had their first responders appreciation night, over 60 cars, including the California Lightning cars, the, those are 1,200 cc cars that came to race in Lamoore, a little bit bigger, a little bit faster. The rain did slow us down on a couple of events, having to dry out the track, even though it's a dirt track, the clay catches moisture very much. So we dried it out a couple of times and then shortened a couple of the mains to be able to get out of there in a decent time and worked out very well because then I think the biggest part of the rain came just when we were wrapping up. So all in all, it was a great, great event and of the last couple of weeks, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Hill, do you have a report on board correspondence, upcoming events and future agenda items?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Your board received correspondence dated September 8th from the United States Department of Interior regarding petitions for temporary transfer of Friant Division Central Valley Project California. For upcoming events, the Kings County Commission on Aging will be hosting a free seniors lunch in the park to commemorate the Independence of Mexico on September 16th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Burrage Park in Hanford. The 21st Annual Blues and Roots Festival will be, take place in downtown Hanford at Civic Park on Saturday, September 17th from 5:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Admission is free. The 10th Annual Light of Hope Elite Cocktail Event will take place on Saturday, September 24th at 5:30 PM at the Hanford Civic Auditoriums. Attendees will hear from advocates about CASA of Kings County. Tickets are $75 per person and the proceeds will be provided to help future for Kings County foster children. Kings County Special Olympics is having their chili cook-off on Saturday, September 24th at the Hanford Civic Park. Vendors and teams are needed, so please make arrangements and plan on attending. Ceremony Museum will be holding a Legends of Lamoore Cemetery Walk on Saturday, September 24th at 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Lamoore Cemetery. Tickets are $20 each and can be purchased at Ramblin' Rose, Kings Players and Eventbrite. This will be a living history presentation by local actors portraying our early notable citizens. There will be a Kings County Public Safety Event on Thursday, October 6th from 7, excuse me, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Kettelman City Park. This is a free family event for the Kettelman City community to learn about the different services Kings County offers. There will be a barbecue, flu shots and much more. For upcoming agenda items, admin will be bringing consideration regarding a response to the grand jury report written titled Follow Up to the Grand Jury Report, 2021 Pedestrian Safety Bridge in Kettelman City, a community's longstanding plea for improvements. Behavioral Health has one item for consideration regarding approval of a grant with California Health Facilities Finance Authority. Finance has one item for consideration regarding approval of the tracker debt software contract. Health has two items, consideration regarding public health funding changes and county update regarding COVID-19. Actually, we won't be hearing that because we just heard that today, sorry, we'll have to delete that one. Public Works has three items, consideration regarding the approval of a lease with Farm Service Agency for ag building space, consideration regarding the approval of county track 931 Jackson Ranch subdivision improvement agreement and consideration regarding the approval of an agreement for temporary encroachment in county right-of-way. Sheriff has three items, consideration regarding approval of agreement with Hanford Adult School for Inmate Education Services, consideration regarding approval of the jail key management purchase and consideration regarding approval of an annual maintenance agreement for eight LiveScan machines. That concludes our report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. The Special Olympics has been canceled, so that won't be taken place, so that you can remove off the list. Senior Day will also have breakfast, so if you want to show up early before it gets hot, you can show up out there and have a breakfast burrito on Loopy. He's picking up all the bills. So appreciate that Loopy very much.
Questions, Ms. Chairman? Questions?
I was sure, you said that the grand jury's got another follow-up to their report to the Kettelman City?
It's the board's response. In their last report, they requested responses from both Public Works and your board. So we have to respond to that response or that request as well.
Okay, so Public Works, we got a, a report from the grand jury. Public Works came on agenda and had responses to the grand jury's findings. And now what, so then we submitted that, right?
Correct.
So what's, just for clarification, what's this next step?
They requested that both Public Works and the board respond as separate entities. So this is the board's response and as an elected body, we have an additional 30, or you have an additional 30 days to respond.
So when's the board, when are we supposed to do that? Because I haven't heard anything about that.
That will be next Tuesday.
So how do you plan to get our response from the dials?
Yes, it does have to happen in public session, correct, Kenne Council?
No, I'm saying, are you asking the board to submit written responses to that? Who is formulating the board's response?
We will be providing you with a draft response that your board will review and approve or make modifications to.
Wow.
And it does need to be done, it's a board action, so it would need to be done by the board in open session.
Yes, well, it's a, it's, I'm asking for the clarification because I think it's unheard of that we've already sent in our, our response and now they're asking for more over a pedestrian bridge. It's just, it's very disturbing.
Let me clarify that it's not an additional request, it was, it's a request that was contained in the original report, but it did, as, as Mr. Hill indicated, that original report requested response from both the board of supervisors and Public Works. And so Public Works has a shorter time for response and they did bring before the board that response from Public Works, but the board of supervisors, under the duty to respond, will provide something else. It's not an additional request, it's an existing request.
Got it. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Any other events coming up to anybody's knowledge?
This, this weekend, this Friday night, we have the World of Outlaws here in town for the last race of the season, with the, the print cards run throughout the United States. We have a local boy, Carson Macedo, is close to maybe possibly winning the championship. He's second in points right now, so we wish him all the best and support him in the future.
I think that race starts on Thursday, Friday?
Yeah, but, yeah, Thursday, 360, 410 on Friday.
Yeah, so is he, another busy? Yeah, so, uh, busy, another busy weekend.
Yep.
Anything else going on? Um, we also want to thank Kiri, uh, for the blood drive, uh, 44, uh, donors. Certainly want to thank, uh, everyone that rolled up their sleeve and gave a pint. And, uh, remind me the next date, Kiri, do you have that on your, uh, the blood, uh, the next blood, is the Battle of the Badges?
It's the Battle of the Badges and it is for dates-
It changed, it went from November-
And now it's November 7th, 8th and 9th. It's going to be a three-day event.
Yeah, so, uh, put that in your calendars and, uh, be ready to roll up your sleeves on, uh, those dates as well. Battle of the Badges is, uh, usually a very well, um, attended event, uh, and blood, uh, supplies are extremely low, um, and so anybody that can, if they can go ahead and either donate, uh, at that time or sooner. I'm not sure when they open up the polls, you can, um, identify which department you want to, um, support. And so, uh, we, we'll have that, uh, available for you in the future. So whenever that, uh, information comes up and then we'll add that to the list as far as blood, to be able to, uh, remind everybody.